Good evening and welcome to the Cedar Falls Board of Education meeting on this Monday, August 11th, 2025. It's hard to believe this is the last board meeting now of the summer before school session starts back up. So the summer has gone by fast and we're ready to get back to school session. I would like to call this meeting to order. The first item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda, which is pretty simple tonight. Just approval of our agenda and last board meeting's minutes, approval of accounts payable, open enrollment report, and second semester transportation report. Is there a motion to approve or amend said consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Director Gruber, is there a second?
Second.
Director Meyer, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on, item C of our agenda is public comment. We did not have anyone reach out for public comment tonight. And just a reminder, anyone that has information or comment they'd like to make, as long as you let the board president or superintendent know by 4:00 PM the day of the board meeting, the floor is open for public comment for a three-minute session. So there is none tonight, so we'll move on to item D, which is communications. We don't have our communications director, Janelle, here tonight, but we do have some special guests. We have Brian Townsend, president of the Booster Club here, and we also have Justin Urbannick, our new athletic director here. So we'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you very much. Like you said, my name is Brian Townsend, and I'm the president of the Cedar Falls Booster Club. We have slides here. There we go. So I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Booster Club, and it's been around either exactly the same amount of time as I have, or maybe slightly older. I'm not sure where the 50 starts from, but it's been around, we're celebrating our 50th year this year, which is a big deal for us. And so we have our new logo there, and we also have stickers that we're giving to people. So if you ever find us around, please feel free to grab a sticker. But we've been serving Cedar Falls schools for, like I said, 50 years. This is my second year, haven't been serving for all 50 years, but enjoyed it a great deal and enjoyed what we're able to do to support our students at Cedar Falls High School and our junior highs here in Cedar Falls as well. And so all the money that we bring in, all the proceeds go to, directly to our students. And as said in the previous slide, over 2,200 students are involved in activities outside of school, at our schools. Go ahead, next one there. And so these are the sports that we help to support through our financial fundraising, the money that we bring in. And so that money comes into us through various ways, whether through activity passes or through some things we'll mention here in a little bit, including like our golfing event and other fundraisers that we do. The board includes the president, vice president, treasurer, you can see those, but also maybe most importantly includes representative of parents on the, our board, 24 of those for the high school, and there are two per building for the junior highs. Excuse me. Like I said before, we have the golf outing where we help to raise money. That's one of our biggest fundraisers outside of selling our passes, but we also, we leg concessions up until 2023, and we also have wonderful sponsors who help to provide us with funding. So including tonight's support, the boosters have raised over 1.6 million with an estimated 2.6 million since 1975. And so... My eyes aren't always great, so I wanted to make sure everybody could read. And so this year, we're pledging $113,050 to athletics.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for all the volunteers behind the scenes that aren't here tonight. A lot of hard work goes into all the sports activities throughout the district, so thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item E now, which is our June financial reports, so...
Absolutely. We'll go ahead and pull those up. That's a hard act to follow, but thank again the Booster Club for their donations and their support for the district. They definitely provide a lot of different opportunities for our students. So in some of that, you'll see within the monthly, month-end reports. But tonight, we're going to take a look at June on a monthly basis. We do take a look at those financial reports. Normally, when we have two meetings per month, our board reports are provided at the second board meeting. So we are a little bit behind because the last few months, we've only had one meeting. So tonight, we're looking at June. We have finalized the year in the sense of cash balances. We're still working on accrual balances, or we're finalizing the end of the year. So there are some things that will still be coming out of these balances accordingly, but again, this is cash balances as we are reviewing them. So when we take a look at our end-of-year June, because our fiscal year is July to June, you'll see for our cash balances accordingly for our general fund, we ended the year with Of that, we had revenues of a little over $4.6 million for June, with then expenditures of a little over $6 million, and that was anticipated. If you remember and recall, the board did approve the ability to issue those payments for end-of-year, as we do still have a few of those trickling in. We also then have our management fund. Again, management fund covers the district's insurances and work comp accordingly. Primarily, the expenditures do occur at the beginning of the year, so when we take a look at July next month, you'll see that there's a pretty significant expense associated to that. But we do have some expenditures do trickle in for management as well, of a little over $1,940. So we ended with cash balance again, with cash and investments of $1,172,496. Our capital projects fund, that is at zero. You'll see that there was a prior balance of $10 million as we continued the construction of the high school. We have now finalized those projects associated to that, so that balance will sit dormant until in the future, whenever we may need those funds again. We have our save. We had our revenues of a little $546,000, with expenditures of $133,695 for total cash investments of $15,175,394. We then do also have our PEPAL, which if you recall, the PEPAL is utilized for our fleet, as well as roofing, as well as, and I know Dr. Petit will be going over the 10-year PEPAL plan later on this evening to describe some of those items in which we utilize this for, but we are using some of this as well as for the construction of the nadatorium. You'll see revenues of $35,000, which then expenditures of a little over $2.3 million, which the majority of that was the nadatorium, with a total cash balance of $8,755,161. And then we do have our debt service with a total cash balance of $24,209. As we move forward then with the remaining funds, you'll see our student activity. You'll see that activity that did occur in June. We had revenues of a little over $65,000, with expenditures of $188,000. That's expected. We do have summer programs that do continue, as well as expenditures throughout the year as we were preparing for the new nadatorium and the high school itself, with total cash investments of $934,789. We then have our agency funds with a balance of $446,222, with then our enterprise fund, and our enterprise fund is our nutrition fund. We did have obviously some activity towards the end of the year as school finalized, so we had revenues of $364,000, which contributed to both May and June as we finalized those, as well as then expenditures of a little over $380,000 for total cash investments of $3,783,760. We have then our coffee shop, as well as then our River Hills consortium, which does, is our flow-through of those districts that do contribute, as well as that will be at zero at the end of the year as well. And then these last two slides are where we at, our versed compared to our certified budget at the time that it was written and determined. You'll see that there are some fluctuations throughout. A lot of it has to do with flow of expenditures that do occur and timing as to when they do occur. A lot of, you'll see the save, PEPAL, and capital projects, there is fluctuation in there, and that's because of the timing of the project and when those expenditures occurred, as well as when those revenues did occur. A lot of that revenue was interest this year that was not anticipated based on the market, so we've done extremely well in interest. But this just gives you a quick glance at what those balances were, how we compared to that certified budget. We had our independent audit, we continue to work on that, so in October, we'll go through that to verify what our balances are, to where our certified budget was, and then review that audit itself. So any questions specific to June?
And just to be clear, that's the end of our fiscal year, is that correct?
That is the end of our fiscal year. Yep, that's correct.
So we had anticipated our capital projects would be at zero at the end of the fiscal year, but our budget shows a negative, 148. Did we assume that we would have some?
So in taking a look at, let's see here, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Let's go back at that. So our budget accordingly was a negative expenditures. The expenditures were higher than anticipated. It's not, and that's because of the timing of the project itself and how that flow through. So we had anticipated those expenditures to be lower, but the timing switched, so that's why we did an amendment earlier this year of our certified budget, to ensure that we accounted for those expenditures this year. Yep.
And that really was due to the pool project timing?
Yep.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Janelle, again for updating us and keeping us well informed. And we'll move now to item F of our agenda, which is our second reading of a few board policies that we're updating.
Yes, so these are the second readings of board policies. Last month, we went through a first reading of multiple board policies. Things that need to be brought back for a second reading are items per BioCode that have substantial changes. Each of these five are changes. 503.9 is a change in definition of, excuse me, 503.9 is a brand-new policy of personal electronic devices, so that requires a second reading. 504.5.1, the state changed the definition of bullying harassment, so that changes procedures as well as documentation processes that's required. 602.3 changes some curriculum items of what can be taught, at which grade levels. Meal charges had some federal changes that require different language, that's significant as far as reimbursement in charges for meals. And then district emergency operation plans was a requirement based on the personal electronic devices with language that changes some of our communication strategies and protocols. So each of these require a second reading, and we recommend approval of these five policies.
Okay. I'll first ask for a motion, and then we can open it up and see if there's any questions or discussion points. So is there a motion to approve the second reading of board policies?
I move that Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the second reading of board policies.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion points for...
Mr. President, I would respectfully request that 504.5.1 and 602.3 be separated for separate consideration.
Okay. So I believe Director Gruber has, proposes an amendment to separate 504.5.1 and 602.3 for a separate consideration or vote. Is there a second to that amendment proposal?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. So we will vote on the amendment to remove those two. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Just to be clear, can I clarify? We're just voting to...
Just separating them.
Whether we separate them, thank you.
Yep. So I think we had Gruber, Peterson, Orbis, and Coyle. Okay.
And I said aye as well.
And...
Because we're just pulling them out for a separate discussion, basically, right?
Okay, so we will move that then. We'll call that item FB of the agenda, and now we will vote. We had a first and a second on the table for the second reading as it was. So this will now include 503.9, 710.4, and 902.2. We have a motion and a second, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Hearing none, those carry. So now we will have, we will vote on the amended policies, which are the 504.5.1 and the 602.3. Is, let's see, yeah, is there a motion to approve those policies?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Wait a minute. Can we ask questions before we vote?
Oh, sorry. Let's open it up, discussion, yeah, sorry.
I guess my question would be what the rationale is to pull that and what, why are...
What's the amend?
Yeah, yes. What do we change?
It's not so much amend. I personally, I know it's state law that we are having to amend this code this way. I just cannot in good conscience support that change on, so I would like, I didn't want to vote against the other policies that were on the agenda, but I wanted to register my opposition to the change.
Thank you for clarification on that.
Can you clarify that further?
Yeah, I just had trouble approving a policy that was removing a particular, my, one of our protected classes... Protected group from our policies. As a member of a different protected group, I understand how delicate and tentative protections can be. We have a great history of that in this country. I just can't support removing those protections for a protected class.
If we were to keep that protected class, does that put us under legal obligations that we would be required to enforce? In other words, are we opening ourselves up to liability that we wouldn't necessarily incur otherwise?
Yes. Yeah, I would not recommend not approving and following state code. I think part of the question that we had last meeting was, what does that mean? And I think what we have always said is, we will follow state law, and, because that's an and, we will create safe and very focused learning environments to ensure all kids learn at high levels. So that's, it's an and.
And I understand Director Gruber's objection to this.
Yep, we do.
Would we, we'd still be obliged to follow through on any bullying harassment, and that was also mentioned in our board policy, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. So there's a lot of different layers with this, because there are, state of Iowa removed gender identity through the state legislature this past year, sexual orientation's actually in federal definitions, so that's still included in protected classes, and then there's Title IX federal requirements that tie into all three of these items that we're required to always review and look at through a lens of any kind of either bullying harassment and/or any kind of disagreements amongst students, staff, and/or, a lot of times, people think Title IX is only activities, but it's through any interactions within faculty and/or students as well. So there's multiple layers here. It's not an easy definition by any means, but certainly several protocols that are in place for that.
Okay. Okay, so we have a recommendation to pass, and I know we had discussed this last meeting, and I think Director Orbis, you asked the question, you know, we are removing that language, but what is our day-to-day kind of execution of bullying harassment? And that was well stated, that everyone is going to have a safe and inclusive environment to learn in. So I think that's the important thing. The other thing, I do believe we would be outside or in violation of Iowa code if we didn't change the language.
Could you clarify that? So my understanding was it's not a protected class. So I'm, and for those of you, I'm home rule versus, I'm sorry, if anyone can help me out, please jump in, but...
Dillon's rule, yes.
Thank you, thank you. That we aren't restricted from putting this in, but we open ourselves up to legal issues that may or may, that we wouldn't necessarily have incurred otherwise. Is that...
So we need to go through our attorney, which is Alderson Cooney, through the state of Iowa, who works, well, I would say with the great majority of districts across the state of Iowa. They are considered kind of the legal experts for educational law in the state of Iowa. They laid out a very specific recommendation in brief, talking about the legality and the liability exposure for not following what the, I would say is the intent of law that's been passed by the legislature versus maybe the way it was written, in the fact that the liability that a district would face would be pretty significant for either legal contesting and/or some, they considered lawsuits that would be pretty much pending.
Yep, and just a point, I do recognize the legal situation that our district and other districts across the state are in. I just personally believe that when it comes to these types of issues with marginalized groups, inclusion of it makes it a stronger policy than it doesn't, so.
Thanks for the discussion points. So I think let's go ahead and request a motion to approve, and if you don't mind...
Yeah.
Reusing that same motion to approve the two policies that were removed.
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the second reading of board policies, 504.5.1 and 602.3.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no?
No.
So six yeses and one no, motion carries. So we will now move in. Thank you for that discussion, by the way.
Yes, thank you for your consideration.
Yep. So now we'll move to item G, which, this is some, a couple exciting items here for those on the TPC committee and those that have been working towards funding the TPC. So Dr. Petit, I think you have some good news for us and a couple amendments?
Yeah, so this is kind of exciting news and some backstory as well. So this is really, I guess, kudos to Janelle and the work that she does consistently, and all the work that she does, but roughly, I don't know, 14, 15 months ago, we discovered through conversation that there was some opportunity for some federal reimbursement based on the work that was done with the new high school. Through multiple processes, delays, working with the federal government, as well as the IRS, we have now been accepted for a $3 million reimbursement grant through federal funds for the, in essence, the high school HVAC efficiency and the system that was put into place. So we don't anticipate that we will receive those dollars into our bank account, probably until October or November, but we have received the confirmation that we have been granted those gifts. So that leads to the next two items on our agenda, which is change orders for the Tiger Performance Center. So I'll just talk both of them at the same time, if that's okay. The first one is translucent panels. We feared originally when we went through the bidding process for Phase 1 of the Tiger Performance Center, that it would come in over budget. It actually came in under budget, but we had removed some of the translucent panels on the front of the building. We are recommending replacing those because the original thought with the bid package, put in steel panels, come back in Phase 2, replace the steel panels with translucent panels, but we can save that waste and redundancy by now adding in the translucent panels, not having the metal panels. That will add in some natural light into the Tiger Performance Center and matches the intent of what we would have done in Phase 2, just now at a reduced cost of doing that later. So that cost is $220,000. So that cost is $222,815.04. We recommend approval of that. And then the second one is really an, an exciting opportunity, which would have been included in Phase Two, which is the concrete flooring for all of the Tiger Performance Center. This is recommended for multiple reasons, but number one, I think, is it allows us to utilize some of those spaces even though it's not going to be nice soft rubberized surface or the field turf that eventually go in there, but for throwing a baseball, doing some different activities, flying some of our drones with some of our drone classes. We can do some of those activities in there, but also it's going to allow us just to have a better environment in there. That's not going to be open dirt. It's going to seal everything up. It's going to, to meet the specifications as we look into Phase Two. The hope then is to, to maybe do some things with the Phase Two bid package when we do receive these funds, because I'm still very fiscally conservative. We want to see the money in the bank before we jump too far into that next area of planning, but excited about this. And certainly have to say kudos to the Shields Tiger Performance Center Committee that have done all this works to date to allow us to now be in a position of some exciting change orders for the next phases. And I'd be remiss without saying, the concrete flooring, there are some gifts from the construction company, Peters Construction, as well as some of their subcontractors that are actually gifting funds into this to be able to accomplish that, which is really exciting and amazing as well.
You don't have to do it right now, but would you let us know who those individuals are? So that we could graciously thank them.
I will. We are meeting tomorrow on some different items and I will get specific names and specific contact information.
Okay, thank you.
Good. So is there a motion to approve item G, which is the change order for the translucent panels?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the change order for the Shields Tiger Performance Center translucent panels in the amount of $222,815.04.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Okay. Director Coyle, is there any discussion points or, or questions regarding this motion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no?
And I will abstain.
Or abstain. So we have six yeses and one abstention. So motion carries and we'll move to item H, which really has already been explained. That's the concrete flooring. So I also request a motion for, for that change order.
I move the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the change order status for the Shields Tiger Performance Center floor slab in the amount of $391,718.90.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Director Gruber? Okay, any discussion points or further questions on this?
And it's a big floor slab with electrical and, and all of the AV underground, so it is set up for, to be ready to be finished.
I mean, most of the cost, I think, from what I saw was stuff other than concrete.
Yes, it's all the stuff that's underground under the concrete. So all the conduits, electrical and different components like that. Correct.
Is there any climate controls, like, like a radiant floor under this one? Is it just a straight?
Just concrete with all the different substructures that are in place with floor boxes and things like that for the electrical components. Obviously, when anytime you have running surfaces, playing surfaces, you, you really want to make sure you don't have extension cords that'll come out and cover different things. So those are placed strategically throughout. And then again, just the insulation as well as the waterproofing that's required, especially as you look at coating these surfaces into the future. It's just important to have that done in a way that's right and not, you're tearing out in five years.
Andy, I don't know if now is the time, but could you speak to the overall Phase One, Phase Two, where we're at? I kind of would be remiss if I didn't ask that with, especially with Joy here. I know she's put a lot of time and effort into this and I'm just kind of, I'm, I'm curious where we're at. After we do this, like, just big picture, how much do we have left? What's, what's, any kind of timelines you can share, that type of stuff?
Yeah, so I think the intent and the hope, Phase One, we're working through, if you've been up to the, the high school site, you can see the steel that's going up, the roof structure that's being installed. It's really, really exciting. This, these changes will, now you'll see some of this actually start to, to proceed with the, the front apron as well as obviously in the, the concrete that'll be poured. This is some of kind of Phase Two, so I don't know if we're going to have to call it Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three, potentially Phase Four. When we receive the check, the hope would be the next big push will be HVAC system, potentially finish electrical, the lighting, things like that. Part of the original Phase One process was, this will be egress for some of the fire safety within the, the building as well as the stadium. So we do have fire suppression. We have fireproofing as well as sprinkler systems that'll be in Phase One. There is temporary heat as well, just to make sure that that is conditioned, so nothing freezes, obviously. So lighting, all of the finished electrical, painting, things like that would be in kind of that next bid package. Then really the final, the finishing touches will be working to install the turf and the rubberized surface for the track as well as the basketball courts. There are actually some quotes that we've received for that work, around $800,000 to have all that installed. That can be a board decision at, and when the time is ready to, to make that decision, because those are all done through kind of a consortium or already kind of a pre-bid package that, these are vendors in the state of Iowa that have already gone through that, that process. And then it's going to be all the equipment and that can be done in Phases Two for netting, batting cages, basketball hoops, different things that would be installed, scoreboards that can be done, not necessarily as a, as a full bid package. We anticipate that being about $500,000 to $600,000 because our intent is to take and utilize four of the basketball hoops in the new gym, the existing gym, through some of our basketball coaches dialogue. It's the same height, it's the same steel structure and, and they feel that there are some of the hoops that just, there's too many. So those can be removed and, and put into the Tiger Performance Center to be able to, to use those in there, which could cut costs long-term as well. So hopefully to be continued over the next three months as we get some of those federal government funds and then move into kind of the Phase Two next steps and then potentially those finishing, I would call them accoutrements for the surfacing and, and the equipment.
Are you hoping that as we move out of Phase One into Phase Two with things that, I'm hoping, but I'm hoping that you are thinking the same way, that things will just continue to move along? And that maybe that we will still keep the contractors in place and moves, you know?
Yeah, so I think that next bid package, because the next bid package is going to be the HVAC, electrical, finished painting, finished work inside of the building. It'll be interesting to see as we work with the design team to finalize that. What, will that be a general contractor? Will that be subsets of, of bid packages? That I don't know. And I've not had that conversation. I've not really thought that specifically into the future on that. Just on what that could look like and what that could be for potential pricing and timelines and things like that. So great question and I'm not sure.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fair.
I think this is a huge step though to get that floor down in particular because like you said, it can be used for something.
Yes.
Then robot, you know, drones, whatever. At least it can be used because it's not going to be a dirt floor. So I, I think this is a huge step. It's exciting.
And, and I think something that hasn't been mentioned is it can be used as a base for all the Phase Two work too. Once there's a concrete floor, then all the lifts and everything are much more easier and efficient to run. And, and also there's a safety aspect too. I think covering up the dirt floor is probably best for safety going into the school year.
So will our students be able to go through there and access the stadium, Andy?
That's a big question. And that is, we're still working through that process. I've had a couple of calls with, with city staff on that as well as contractors and, and Mr. Obannick working through that. The original intent was yes, but again, it depends on where construction is at, at that point in time. We should be far enough along. Our, our view is that we should be far enough along in the construction that the egress and access in and out should be safe for, for any students because there's no overhead work that would be occurring. And everything structurally is connected and, and structurally extremely sound. So if there's an emergency, it's going to be used as egress during the school day because that's pathways to, to exit the building, which is why Phase One was designed the way it was designed. So the intent is yes. Hopefully we can have kids go through there, especially when there is no construction that's occurring to be able to, to access the, the structure, but there, there's still some finite details to be worked out with that.
Please take good pictures when marching band is in there when it's pouring down rain out in the field.
Okay, good discussion and this is one of the, I think, fun, fun parts of being around the board is to work on exciting projects like this. So we do have a motion and a second on the table, so I will open it up for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no?
Abstain.
Or abstain. So we have six yeses and one abstention. Motion carries. And we will now move to item I, which is our 10-year PEPL plan. So this is something, I know sometimes board members get approached about, I don't know, special requests for, for PEPL dollars or things like that. So I think the, the administration has been hard at work executing and wrapping up the high school project and the pool project and the TPC. But now I think there's kind of a light at the end of the tunnel and so I thought it would be a good time to bring this back and just discuss as a board and I hope the board gives your input on these items. But Dr. Patey, I'll let you present what you have.
Yeah, so we have had a 10-year physical plant and equipment levy that is the PEPL, the acronym for, for what the physical plant and equipment levy is for multiple years now and, and it's kind of a rolling plan. We continuously review it, look at it. Obviously, the last two years, three years, we have been hyper-focused on the new high school being built as well as the Shields Tiger Performance Center, the nadatorium and, and all those different components. So it is a great time to bring this back and share with the board different components, some of the bigger projects that are within the, the plan as we look to the future and then also the different aspects that do go into that. So, there we go. You will see the, the process utilized. Our maintenance buildings and ground staff goes out and, and works with, there we go, sorry about that. There's a delay with that. Goes, goes out and works with our, our building leadership, building principals, as well as our maintenance staff to be able to determine what are some of the, the larger items that should be on this list. We then go through kind of a weighted prioritization importance system to be able to look at. What, A, what is the educational improvement enhancement that this provides that makes us a better system for education and serving our students, our staff and our community? Second, how does this enhance safety and, and overall improve what we do as a system to make us a, a better environment for learning through safety, through other components and then also efficiency? And efficiency can come in to play through HVAC. It can come in through human capital and how we, we do work, but also to just make us financially more nimble and, and feasible as we look overall as our, as our system. Each of these then are provided kind of a, a weighting as well as what that would look like with our budget year to year, summer to summer, as we typically will use these funds for summer work. So you will see that and we'll, we'll kind of show different parts of the plan here as well, but first we have to look at our annual expenditures and there are some very significant annual expenditures that we budget for to be able to make sure that academically we are making good decisions, but also through our annual repair budget that we're always staying ahead of what we would consider to be annual maintenance throughout. So some of those examples are, we do have a bus rotation and we rotate through our buses two or three per year to ensure that our fleet is no more than 20 years old with any given school bus. So that varies from year to year, $330,000 to up to $540,000 as we look over the next 10 years. Roof and masonry repair, the, this has also an inflationary cost added to it, but for upcoming years, it's about $425,000 as we look to have preemptive work done based on our 10-year roof repair cycle as well as tuck pointing and things like that, because we know if you're, any of your buildings have perforations, you have significant additional cost than if you have preemptive repair work. And then we get into technology as a yearly expense, as we look at student devices as well as staff devices. But also then we have new items within this that are radon mitigation, which we've done for a few years, but it's been a requirement now within the last three years at the state legislative level that they required students or schools to, to have radon mitigation. So we go through testing every year to ensure that that is done at a, an appropriate level. And then we also have some well exchangers, some, some loop inspections that are involved with an annual cost too. New this year, we've added in annual gym floor resurfacing as we now have additions and, and newer gym spaces across our district. We are putting in floor resurfacing costs at about $25,000 per year. We do know that typically gym floors last anywhere from 10 to, to 12 years. So we've now got a, a, a long-term plan on when those will be done and how those will be done, as well as carpet replacement and software leases.
Andy, these are basically all annual except for that every third year.
Correct, yes. So staff devices, we budget $2,000 or $200,000 a year, but it's really a cost every, every three years.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
So this is hard to read and I, and I know that, but this is all those annual costs, as we look at those for our fiscal year going out now to fiscal year 2034, which is hard to state and, and say when you think 2034. But it goes through and just lays out what those look like as we spread these out to ensure that, A, they are the right numbers and fluctuate year to eight, year to year, but also have the inflationary clause and built in what we anticipate would be a, a natural escalation. And then this is just a kind of a snapshot as we go through it to look at weightings, to look at how those fall, and this is kind of an old picture, I guess, that I, that I took from a previous presentation. But looks at then the upcoming fiscal year as far as what those expenses would be, how those play out. Green is usually means yes, we're moving forward. Yellow means usually not, it's already been accomplished or it's being done in a different way with a different partnership. So it's a, it's a really large document with just a lot of different ifs and whens and whats and, and how this is going to tie in. So to get into kind of the nuts and bolts, this is what everybody, I think, would be more interested in. So upcoming projects, and these are going to be the major projects, not the individual smaller projects. That could be a 20,000 or 30,000. That sounds big when we look at our individual households. But when we look at some of the work that we do through summer work, it's not necessarily the, the items that we focus in on. So there are tile replacement schedules where there are gaps and safety concerns that are going to be replaced in December of 2026. That's Alphale and Hanson. The nadatorium completion is going to be a big PEPL expense. There are some cash flow as well as hopefully some of the dollars from the federal government that'll come into our PEPL account that'll be used for the Shields Tiger Performance Center. Roofwork replacements, there are some floor tiles at homes that are scheduled to be replaced due to those being original floor tiles and, and chipping and, and coming up. And then Orchard Hill Transitional Kindergarten Bathroom remodel, which has had some challenges the last few years with some backflow, some other challenges. If you've been out to Orchard Hill, you'd know what some of those are. And then the Petten Homes Pool is going to be a very significant construction project, but that with kind of construction would but that with kind of construction would come from our one cent sales tax, which is our lost account, which Donell shows on the, her monthly financials, not as lost, but as
Save.
Save, which is just another acronym for it. So you can see that that has been building up, but we've anticipated that coming from the, or being spent for Peaton Homes. So that is excluded. We don't know exactly what those costs are going to be. We have a meeting tomorrow to start that work, to be able to start those conversations. But we anticipated some of those, of those other works to, to be about a $6 million expense in summer of 2026.
Quick question on that. Would the intention to be to do them sequentially or kind of start them at the same time? Or
No.
Kind of always assumed that Pete would be the first one.
That is part of That is part of the discussion that we're going to start having tomorrow. I always envisioned doing those at the same time to try to take, take advantage of economies of scale. But we also want to take into account timing and schedule and when that work can be accomplished. The good thing is both pools currently at Peaton Homes have the ability to have separate access. So we can close those down and really have a non-student impact during the school days. So that's part of the discussion we're having tomorrow to be able to start figuring out what does that look like as far as timeline. Great question. To be continued with that. And all of those have to go through a, a very specific bidding package. We're not sure on the bathroom remodel yet, if that can just be how and when that will be done. But most of these are going to go through a very specific legal process that's specified in IO code as far as what, where and when you have to go through the timeline.
Is it too soon to know like what kind of use of the pools we're going to have?
That's going to be some of the next steps. We had some plans drawn up probably eight to 10 years ago as we looked out to, to figure out what the next steps would be, mainly because we wanted to figure out as, at that time, do we invest significant dollars into the Homes Competition Pool to turn that into maybe an eight-lane pool as well as then add classrooms on the exterior of both Peaton Homes? What is the cost benefit analysis of that? And then what does it mean if we transition those spaces into classroom spaces? Because that's where we know capacity-wise, we need that, that done. No.
No.
Is the answer. Because what, what we drew up eight to 10 years ago was a concept to look at needed space for flexible spaces that we have at our elementaries and, and at our new high school, but not at our junior highs, as well as at the time, what those needs might be changed. Times have changed in the last eight to 10 years. So we will have to go through user groups and feasibilities and, and working with multiple people to, to get that in place. Great questions. So looking at the presentation and going into the following summer, 2027, we have some central service HVAC that needs to be done. That is where our current transportation, our bus transportation, as well as our central services for maintenance and our Food Services Act. We plan eventually to be able to have a new transportation center, but this HVAC is work that's going to be done for structures that are going to be kept down there for our buildings and grounds, as well as our maintenance staff, where we house all of our summer pro, or our summer mowers and maintenance, as well as our winter maintenance and, and Sanders and Salters and a lot of equipment. So that's work that needs to be done and has been really held off on. Board members that have been on the board for now several years will know that the Aldrich Elementary land was purchased jointly between the district and the city. We own roughly 20 acres. They own roughly 20 acres. The Ashworth Drive, which is the road on the north side of Aldrich Elementary that goes east and west, is partially put in on the northeast side where the elementary's at. That's going to be connected through the development. There's some work that's being done now on that. During the summer of 2027, we anticipate the Ashworth Drive being extended on the northwest side. It's a city property, but there's an agreement that goes back multiple years, now probably 10 or 12 years, that we would cost share the cost of that road. They shared and cost shared the cost of the road going north and south, as well as the east-west road, the Ashworth Drive on the northeast side. Our responsibility is half the cost for the, the, the west side of Ashworth Drive. So we anticipate that being done as phased in and as anticipated. What that cost will be based on what we anticipated seven years ago is probably going to be a little different. But that's also been on how they phased out some of the residential work in that area. There's a Hanson Original Classroom remodel, which would be first grade and I believe second grade classrooms, maybe a kindergarten room. That still is original from their, the 1960-something build. There's some Shields TPC dollars that's anticipated potentially to continue to, to finish out that work, which would be kind of Phase Two or Phase Three, depending on timing of that, when that gets completed. And you can see that's roughly about a, a $4 million budgeted expense. Summer 2028 is kind of where we finish our, our kind of specific project look with some of the other projects we'll, we'll include on there. There's a Homes Kitchen remodel. This would finish all of our kitchen remodeling. This is also a potential addition due to how that kitchen is, is set up. So it's a fairly large project. All of our other kitchens have been done at all of our other buildings, which allows them to be standalone self-served kitchens. Homes Kitchen is that, but it is severely outdated and severely inefficient in, in how it runs. There are some playground resurfacing at Cedar Heights with some of the replacements of wood chips to be able to move that forward with safety. And then there's some rough work per the, the rough replacement plan with a little bit more, more money based on the 10-year roofing plan and the 30-year replacement cycle that we have built into 2028. That's anticipated to be a little over $4 million. And then there are some other significant larger projects that are coming into play as we look to the, the, the future. We do know that that bus garage renovation relocation addition needs to be something that is reviewed. That is always a challenging discussion because it doesn't really have a significant impact maybe on student learning, but we are outgrowing our current sites, the number of buses that we have. There's nothing we can do with the current site where we can't park buses. There's just no more room to park buses. And we can't put any actual other gravel or hard surfaces out there because of water retention and the, the location of the site. And there's just some struggles with, with how and what we run. And also we can't buy buses with air conditioning because we don't have enough room to get buses in to service them with the extra air conditioning unit on top, which is something we know into the future we, we certainly want to do. So there's just some limitations with what we're able to do versus what we need to do as we look to the future. South Room Classroom remodels, the final few classrooms at that South Dale. The, the hope, this is a new item that came from working with building principals. The only support court that we have in our district is Cedar Heights. And speaking of a, a child that uses different gymnasiums for different activities, that's the one court they don't want to go to because it is support court. So replacement of that court. There's a Homes parking lot expansion, junior high gymnasium, air conditioning, and also some other playground, ground tile replacement. As we look to the future, it's typically one of the things that we spend dollars on working with PTOs as they look at specific upgrades to equipment. We typically do kind of a 50-50 agreement to, to do tile replacements, which is, there's a lot of components in this plan that add up to some bigger dollars as we look into the next six, seven fiscal years. So it's a, it's a really big process. It's a really big plan. Trying to get input from principals and our Buildings and Grounds Department, working with Donell on budgeting as we look at how do we work through this really big document, but also take care of our annual needs to spend our dollars efficiently and effectively, which is also exciting, but also there seems to be a lot more maybe wants than there are sometimes needs that we try to focus on, on to also balance hopes, wants and wishes. That seemed like me talking for a really long time. Sorry, I apologize.
I would say when we started this and put, especially when we started with the roofs. And so when they, we started with the roofing projects, it's, it's a great cycle. And I think it's always positioned that the district into be that we're being proactive instead of reactive. I mean, I think we all know that there's going to be times where we're going to have to, something's going to have to move up on the list because of, that's something that might happen or will happen. But at least we can look out into the future and you're planning for it. And I would say as a, if, if a community member is looking at this, I hope that they're looking at it thinking they're really being thoughtful with the use of the PEPL dollars and just know that these projects are important and just, I like the, your matrix because I, I know that there are people watching that really appreciate that component of it. So thank you.
I know we've been talking about a new transportation center for quite a while here too. And I know that's, it's hard to maybe justify that sometimes, but I think we've probably come to the point where we can't push that one down the road much farther.
Yeah, there's been quite a bit of just conversation, but I would say, yeah, he'd say behind the scenes. That's not the right verbiage, but in partnership, is there a way we can do that in a joint venture? Is there ways that we can do that in, in the most effective use of dollars? And my, my optimistic viewpoint is yes, there is. And how do we tie that into utilizing all of our dollars in the most efficient way? That's, that's what we want to do.
I, I would agree. The, the objective kind of look and, and weighting and, and balancing all projects. I know probably if you ask every building, I'm sure there's projects that everybody wants. But we have to look objectively across the district and see what is the best value and what rises to the top. So I really appreciate it and I think board input is, is valued and especially as you interact with community members and hear of needs. I think that's really valued and continue the conversation. So no, no board action for this. This is just a, a conversation and just looking for continued input. Next item on our agenda here is item J. So just as information, I guess, and, and just to reorient people on what our board does and what our superintendent does. So our board is an elect, locally elected board of volunteers. So no board member gets compensated for the works, the work that they do. But I would say two of the most important things that the board member does do. One is set district board policy, which we demonstrated earlier this evening. And the other is hiring and evaluating our superintendent. So if you think of a typical company, it might have a CEO and a board of directors. That's a lot of how we operate. And so our superintendent, Dr. Andrew, Andy Patee is, has been with us now for, I think, 11? Or 13. I'm two years behind here. So 13 years. And so once a year, we come together as a board and we evaluate the superintendent. And so this year, Dr. Patee did come to us and requested no increase. So the board met last board meeting and discussed. And I thought we had a very hearty discussion. And I would say the board consensus was mainly one of, we want to position ourselves and have the posture of austerity and, and try to be frugal with our dollars. But no one was in favor of a zero increase raise, mainly because, well, that would signal that something is wrong. And I think the board consensus was a, a vote of confidence. And so the board consensus was a 2.8% total package increase. And Dr. Patee has accepted that verbally. And so we would like to approve this contract. And the superintendent's contract is on a three-year rolling contract. So this is a contract renewing for the next three years. So I would now open it up for a motion to approve Dr. Patee's contract.
I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education, I move that the Cedar Falls Board of Education of the Cedar Falls Community School District issue a three-year contract to Dr. Andrew R. Patee as superintendent of schools with a salary of $235,425 for the first year of the contract. District contributions of $15,150 in 403B and $3,500 in district car allowance and standard district administrative benefit package for a total package increase of 2.80 as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And any discussion points or further comments that the board would like to make? I don't want to speak for the whole board here.
Thank you for your hard work throughout the years, Andy.
I, I guess I forgot to mention, you know, things that were mentioned. I mean, we, this past year has been a successful year in, in a lot of metrics. Opening a new high school for the first time in 50 years and maybe, maybe the, the only time we, we might see that happen. And also just the work with the pool, getting that going and almost completed and will be completed here soon and the TPC and all of the community involvement and graduating, I think, the largest graduating class maybe in history. So a lot of, a lot of good things to celebrate. And so
Retirement of the admin team.
Yes. Putting in place strong leaders in the admin team. I know that was, two years ago, that was probably one of the bigger concerns of the board of, of the big challenges coming ahead. And so we've got a strong admin team. So again, a lot of, a lot of good things to celebrate and, and honor. So. Okay, we have a motion and a second. So all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say no. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, well now we'll move to item K. No board action here, but a, a conversation and a discussion around IASB legislative priorities. Dr. Patee?
Yeah, not really a whole lot to discuss other than any thoughts, ideas, any feedback that you would like me to submit to the Iowa Association of School Boards based on their kind of platform that they put out. Because there's nothing that they have asked us to submit. It's just basically comments regarding this.
I guess for me, it's like to see them continue to work to push against any expansion of privatization of public school dollars. You know, that we've gotten quite a bit away from what we think that, that money should be used for over the past couple of years. And I'm pretty sure they're going to continue trying to push that wherever they can and hope that they, you know, make that a priority to stand against that.
And it did look as though that was one of their key, key points on their platform.
It was. Yep, it was. Talking about tax credits and choice and, and some of those different options as far as local dollars. Correct.
There's also been a push to have partisan elections for a school board. And I see that's one of the positions that they do not think is a good idea.
Yes, that is another one of their subcomponents of, of their platform to, to keep that non-partisan.
And I'm curious how the Ipers and the pay perform, pay based on performance, student performance is going to impact. So that might be interesting to see what all that turns out.
Yes, and, and again, not knowing what that will look like or what that could be presented as. That is something that I'm assuming will come up during the delegation. will come up during the delegate assembly because that's going to be something that could be pretty fresh as far as a new platform or a new key component of the legislative session in 2026.
Right, absolutely.
I think that's all occurred since this draft.
It has, yes.
It has.
But would you suggest that's a comment to feed back, to make that a point?
I would think so, yes.
Yep, I will add.
If it moves forward, for sure.
And again, I think that's one that they've already recognized and stated in their policies as well, that contributions to Ipers are very important to attract good public.
I mean, they've been attempting to go after Ipers for a long time, so it's not the newest line of attack on it.
Right, seems to be pretty important and out in the news now, I would say, on the chopping block.
That is good to mention, that that is something that we have seen and want to make sure is discussed.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
I guess just continued support of those, like, that we've talked a lot over the years that I've been on the board about mental health support for students, staff, parents, you know, to help make our staff and our educators and staff's jobs a little bit easier, to help give them that support that they need, whether it's in the classroom or outside.
Perfect. All right. Hearing no further comments, so now we'll move to item L. Again, just a conversation. So Dr. Petit, I think you have two items here of committees you're looking for.
Yes, this is, annually, we always ask for volunteers to serve on committees to create some draft goals to bring back to the full board for the Board of Education goals, as well as superintendent goals, and would certainly take any volunteers potentially for either one of those areas.
And again, they are board goals and.
Superintendent goals.
Superintendent goals.
So maybe first for board goals. Do we have three volunteers for that? No more than three, right?
Correct.
I will.
Thank you.
I can do that.
I would be happy to, to be on either one.
Same, I'll do either one.
Okay. Maybe, Bet, let's put you on superintendent. And Joyce, do you want to do the board goals?
Either one, well.
Okay.
I can do superintendent, too.
Superintendent.
And if you still need someone else, I can do superintendent. But if you've got it filled, that's okay, too.
Okay. It's me or you.
It's up to you.
I'll do the superintendent goals.
Sounds good.
So we all have Nate, Jeff, and Joyce will meet for Board of Education goals and then Bet, RJ, and I will meet for superintendent goals. Okay, thanks all for volunteering. And moving on now, superintendent's report.
Just a couple of different items. Thanks for the prior, I guess, comments and certainly an honor to be here and serve Cedar Falls, our students, our community, our families. So thank you for that. Couple of different items. We are excited for the upcoming school year. We're doing an all-school welcome differently this year. We're going out to buildings and doing that in each of the buildings at different locations, just as an opportunity to have some of our newer staff, especially in the central office, out into buildings to be able to put faces to names and just that visualization, which is going to be fun. We also know that now is the start of a lot of different activities for students, so everything's going to be ramping up. And it's always so neat to see our kids involved and kind of that public-facing component of the talent our kids showcase in co-curricular, extracurricular, club activities, as well as different nonprofit organizations. It is simply amazing to see what our kids do. So encourage everybody on the board and in our community to go out and see some of those activities.
Okay. Why don't we just move into the last item here, questions, comments, concerns, and open up the floor. Questions for Andy or comments otherwise.
Andy, can you maybe just give everyone out there a reminder of first day of school and stuff like that?
Yeah, so first day of.
Days of school.
Yes, first day of school. We actually have new teacher orientation starting here in a few days this week.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes, which is coming up quickly, which is exciting. All staff come back on the following Tuesday. And then we have secondary students that start on Monday, the 25th. We're trying something different this year with elementary students with trying to have fewer early dismissals. We, I think last year had five consecutive early dismissals for elementary because of input conferences, backpack nights, and then just the normal Wednesday dismissal. So this year, we're trying to do a non-school day on Monday. So elementary students start on Tuesday, the 26th, with only one early dismissal, which would be the normal Wednesday dismissal, to do backpack nights, input conferences, and everything else for our elementary students to try something different, to see if that's better received. We'll do surveys and things like that with our parents to find out, did they like what we did prior with more early dismissals or do one full day where all that's taken care of and less hopefully disruptions. So we'll see how that goes. So the answer is secondary students, Monday, the 25th. Secondary students, Tuesday, the 26th. And we're excited to have everybody back.
Secondary, Monday.
Primary.
Yeah.
I meant primary.
Secondary on Monday, elementary pre-K six on Tuesday. If I said that backwards, I apologize.
And as far as you know, registration is going well. We have, hopefully, 100% participation. I know that doesn't usually happen, but.
Yeah, you know, we are extremely busy during the summer in our office. There's been a lot of new registrants, as well as returning, is typically all online. From our viewpoint, it's gone extremely well and continues to go extremely well. We always try to streamline that each and every year to make it more efficient. And so far, it's gone well. Looking around the table at different parents, if they have felt the same, it went extremely well from our lens so far, knock on wood.
Staff positions, are staff positions filled?
We had one open position that stemmed from, it was a later June resignation that we then had a filling and a transferring that we went through several interviews and it made a decision that we would look at a mid-year grad to fill that role. So we have to do some things internally to cover some courses for the first semester, but feel we have the expertise with our staff that can do that in a really, really productive way. And we'll look at a new grad in December, January to fill that role, which we have actually two student teachers in that content area that we will probably be interviewing sometime in September to be able to get an early hire and signed on the dotted line for that position. And I'm specifically looking at a person in the audience that will help lead that charge.
Right there.
Maybe one other item that I think some community members, particularly the swim community, is interested in is the pool opening has been delayed. And I know that progress has been made, so maybe just a quick update on when we expect to have the pool open.
Yeah, so we had a big meeting about a week and a half ago with us, members of the city, and members of our BLAST swim community, construction, design, several different members. The most recent delay has been, so I guess to start with the end in mind, the intent is to have the Marcusson Swim meet, which is October 4th, Saturday, to be held in our new nadatorium. We are hoping to be able to obtain possession of that building sometime the week of September 22nd. That way, we can get some swimming practices, be able to get all the flaws worked out. The most recent challenge was the tile coping, the coping tile, which is the bowl nose tile, which was on a production delay, which is the tile that goes around the edge of the pool, which leads into our water circulation system. And that has to go in first because all of our other tile gets laid off the bowl nose tile for the layout and features, not only on the swim deck, but going into the water of the pool. So that was scheduled to be, to come and be delivered on Thursday. We did receive delivery on Thursday, which is now onsite and being installed. But that was a backorder slash production challenge with that specific tile. They did not think that was going to be an issue, but it wound up being an issue, which now put us into this timeframe of late September. The question that was asked, I'd asked the question, what else can we anticipate that would slow this down? Is there anything that is on backorder, on order, or waiting to be onsite? And the answer was, no, we can't think of anything. So we hope that this is the last delay, fingers crossed. There's just been several different items that have popped up that we didn't anticipate. So now this is, again, it's not a fault of any group, organization, person, or team. It's just one of those things where there's been some different fabrication components and or backordering of different components that now we think are past. Great question.
Yeah, thanks for that update. I know there's folks out there that really want to know the status, so good update.
Yeah, and I kind of have a PSA-type thing. So, you know, we know school board elections are coming up this fall. If there is anyone who is interested in running our state school board association, Iowa's Association of School Boards, IASB, is holding a series of webinars for candidates, starting on Wednesday, August 13th at noon. I am going to be on that webinar as one of the school board members to offer advice and whatnot to anyone who is attending. Any questions or want, interested, anyone who might be interested in running and want to maybe attend these webinars, encourage you to go to ISAB's website, which is IA-SB.org. And at the top of the page, there's a link for school board elections. And on that page, there will be the list of the webinars and you can sign up for that. So.
Okay, thanks. And thanks for volunteering for that. Okay, anything else? If not, I will request a motion to adjourn.
Let's move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks for attending and tuning in, everyone.
Thank you.